Hello.
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 I'm Jane Schreier.
Manfred and I welcome everybody here to Taffys. Thank you for coming tonight. As you know, this was intended to be a public forum on Goose Creek specifically, economic development generally. They're kind of tightly related. It's also the first of several of these public forums we hope to hold here at Taffys. As the election season draws near, we're going to have the candidates for the commission seats here at different nights. You'll get the publicity on that as it gets closer. So we're going to try and get the politics of the county out in the open a little bit more by holding these public forums. So thanks a lot for participating in it. We have a couple of special guests in the audience speaking of those kinds of forums. Eric Green is here. He is one of the candidates for the commission in the fall.
Give him a hand.
We are expecting Denise Robertson and Jane Marshall also. If you know them when they walk in, you'll recognize them. Otherwise, we'll try and let you know when they're here. But they are also commission candidates. We, as you know from the first press releases that went out of this, we invited the three county commissioners, Bob Stonecash, Dave Westler, and Chris Day.
There's Denise.
There's Denise Robertson. Welcome. We invited the three commissioners tonight to entertain our questions from the public. We were going to have them written first so there wouldn't be a lot of animosity or anything, shouting, whatever. And I was going to be the moderator. We also invited Matt Appenzeller from the Chamber of Commerce. He's the executive director. He is here.
And he's Chamber of Commerce also sponsored the event. Let's give him a hand.
Yes. We invited Shonda Combs, who is the executive director of the Economic Development Department of the County.
Jeff Seward.
Jeff Seward, who is the chairperson of the Preble County Development Partnership, of which I happen to be a member as well. And as of last week, they were all confirmed to be here. So do what you want with that information. Am I going to be more blunt about that? Is it necessary?
I don't think so.
Let me, speaking of blunt, let me have Manfred give you the chronology of what has happened here and why we're here right now, and then we'll talk about what we're going to do from there. Okay? Thanks.
Welcome, everybody. Hello. I tell you, it's a real privilege to be here. And the reason I say that is because I am one of these people immigrated to this country several years ago in 1987. And one of the reasons why I immigrated to this country is because it is literally one of the few domains in this world where you have true freedom. And this freedom is articulated in ways that we can say things, that we can do things, as long as we don't hurt our neighbors, where we can find majority with the public rules, with the majority rules. And with the recent incidents, it brought me literally to a boiling point. The boiling point is that those who are politically in charge for this county don't find it necessary to answer to their constituents. They're in the end are the ones who are paid by our tax monies. They are servants of us. They are not little monarchs running around and doing whatever they want to do. They are responsible to us. Can I hear an amen? I want to give you a brief rundown, and I will give that press release, and we will talk economic development, I promise you. But I want to give you a brief rundown, what happened after we invited everybody, and I'm going to read it to you, that we all have the same information, that I gave that information to the local press. There's the Register Herald representative, and where's the Paladium Item representative? They're somewhere.
Rachel.
The Rachel's over there. The topic we formulated is "Preble County Commissioners Issue Bogus Press Release to Avoid Attendance at Public Forum." The owner of Taffys, Manfred Schreier, and many other local citizens who initiated a public forum at Taffys on Monday, June 11th at 7:00 PM were outraged about the actions of the Preble County Board of Commissioners. The commission took it upon themselves to move a business event to which they were invited as panelists, not hosting. Schreier had invited Chris Day, Dave Westler, and Bob Stonecash, all Preble County Board of Commissioners, as well as Jeff Seward, Chair of the Preble County Development Partnership, Shonda Combs, Executive Director of the Economic Development, and Matt Appenzeller, Executive Director of the Preble County Chamber of Commerce, to discuss local economic development issues, specifically the Goose Creek development on I-70, each of whom had agreed to attend as panelists. Jane Schreier was to moderate the event, and local citizens would submit their question to the panel in writing only. In the planning stages for this event, the Preble County Board of Commissioners attempted to use the Sunshine Law to avoid their attendance at this public forum. I quote an email from the Preble County Commissioners. "If the entire Board of Preble County Commissioners participates at your forum, which they all, which they all want to be able to speak, the Board will have to include your forum as part of their business meeting in order to stay within the guidelines of the Ohio Sunshine Law, and the meeting will have to be clerked and recorded. From your email, the Ohio Sunshine Law would be violated, and the entire Board could not be able to speak without being in violation. I am certain you will want to talk to Chris Day about this. Here's his cellphone number. Connie, signed by Connie." When challenged by local attorney Jane Schreier, my wife, the Board agreed the Sunshine Law would not apply, and they withdrew their objection. It appeared the Commissioners had no other choice but to attend and question, and answers the questions from the public. They gave us then their confirmation that they would be here. Last weekend, this last weekend, Preble County citizens found out through the Paladium Item and the Register Herald that the Taffys event had been moved and that citizens could come to commission chambers since the commission would now be holding the event. The Commissioners had sent out a press release, taking it upon themselves to cancel the privately hosted event by Taffys. The press release claimed the format would be the same as Taffys, even though Matt Appenzeller, who's the Executive Director of the Preble County Chamber of Commerce, and Jane Schreier, who's the moderator, never agreed to be at that event. I have a news release, you can have copies, that, what was published in the Register Herald, and in the Paladium Item, which appeared this weekend. None of the Preble County Board of Commissioners notified me of the decision not to appear as previously agreed, or the attempt to circumvent the public meeting, even though Schreier had heard it unofficially through the Chamber of Commerce representatives. What possibly, I'm going to ask this question, what possibly gives public officials the right to cancel a private event they are invited to? And mind you, they are servants of this county. This is an extreme measure to avoid the public, on the public's terms. On Monday morning, Shonda Combs, Executive Director of Economic Development of Preble County, sent an email to me which read, "I learned this morning, this is this morning, that there will be a forum this evening in the Commissioners' chambers. Due to the extenuating circumstances, I will not be attending the chamber-sponsored event at Taffys." This seems actually kind of weird to me, that the Board of Commissioners did not notify her that they changed an event to their event, made a public, a private event, a public event out there. Very bizarre. If this has been the modus operandi for years in this county, public officials run their own show and refuse to listen to the public. Indeed, they avoid us when we try to ask questions, even to the point of single-handedly and without any notice, moving in deep, attempting to cancel a privately organized event. Apparently, they don't even inform their own staff of their shady activity. They did not notify Shonda. The Commissioners are irresponsible, from the Preble County Leach, Leach Eight Line scandal to the landfill, to initiating the debt tax without consulting local businesses affected by it, and now they cancel privately organized meetings via press releases. What more are we to endure? They fear our oversight. That's the end of the press release, which was stated. This for me is incredible, and we all should be afraid of such action. This can happen to each one of us, that a private event is moved or anything in the direction of what they want to do. They are, in my opinion, little monarchs, and this has to stop. Now, the question is this, we have, are there any questions about this press release or about this event, so that we're all in the same boat? Are there any questions?
I'd like to thank Matt for showing up.
Yeah, let's give Matt a big hand.
You can say, I just referred the matter to my executive committee of our board. So as a group, we came to the decision that we're just going to stick with what we have planned, and I was instructed to show up.
So what they have done is, they have moved this event over there as well. We have a couple of choices here. We can discuss economic development here among ourselves, and we can vote on this, or we can move full force over to the chambers over there and ask them the questions.
Can we take a wine?
That was asked before. Sorry, sorry.
We knew that was her the first question.
Beer, bud, bud.
We'll wait for you to finish that. Yes, go ahead.
Can they have a meeting over, doesn't that put it under the guidance of the Sunshine Law, and so they have to have 24-hour notice to the public before they can even have a meeting?
They could have had somebody just like Mr. Golden sitting here with a video camera to tape this, and that would have been a complete minutes, and it would have been completely illegal happening. They violate the Sunshine Laws all the time by passing notes.
Don't they have to notify 3-4 hours in advance to the public?
They do.
They did when they moved.
They did through the press release.
So there's going to be minutes and everything taken.
Over there.
Then I would think that we should go to make the minutes and ask our questions.
Okay, so Teresa said that we should go over there. I need to hear your feeling, your opinion about this.
No, I give credence to their meeting.
Okay, give credence to their meeting.
I'll second you.
Talk a little bit about the change in moderator. We know what that's about, don't you think? I mean, we thought we would be able to take, we would take questions, real questions from the public, without them being screened or necessarily safe. Now they've got somebody else over there in their territory, basically, that they've put in charge of the questions. So who made up the questions? I'm sure they're going to be a little bit easier. But they may or may not take our questions, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, because if there's a public forum, I mean, I'm new to the area, but if there's a, if there's a public forum, if there's a public, then just ask your questions, right?
Well, they are doing it the way we would have done it here. It's not open. You have to submit your question there in writing as well, which I also think may be a violation of their meetings. But there are a lot of violations here, speaking from a legal perspective.
Well, what's the word? Do you want to go together?
Yeah.
Jane, I have, you want to introduce Mike Snell?
Mike Snell, hello, welcome. Mike Snell is also on the Preble County Development Partnership, was instrumental with Matt Appenzeller informing that to begin with.
And he would replace Jeff Seward?
He is taking Jeff's place as the representative from the partnership.
Fine. Let's stay here. How many are in favor to stay here? Hands up. How many oppose?
Well, the options are out here.
We'll stay here. Yeah, we'll stay here. That's, I would say then, Jane, instead of having the question written, let's do open mic.
Sure.
You're still, you're still, go ahead, Mary.
The only comment that I would have.
Go ahead, Mary, come here. Come up here.
I'm Mary Golden, and the only comment I would have is that we all have the same end in mind. Okay, so by not going over there, yeah, we feel better, because, you know, they pulled this thing over on us. But on the other hand, does it serve the purpose of why you all are here to begin with? Okay? We want to have a voice to them, and sometimes you have to go and make sure that your voice is heard. That's the only thing.
That's fine.
I would hate to miss that opportunity.
Yeah, I guess, that's fine. I have to help.
You will be here.
Pardon me? They're over there right now. They have their own meeting in reference to Goose Creek.
Coffee's 35 cents.
At Manfred.
Come here.
That's good, because I don't want to be turned around.
I'm Janice Stewart. I moved back up here about three years ago. I grew up and graduated from Eden. And as a force, if we all walk in there together, they're going to have to take notice of it. If we don't show our force to them, they're going to keep doing what they're doing right now. And we're never going to move forward as a county and grow this county the way it needs to be grown. We have to change what's happening in the county now, because we're not growing, we're staying stagnant. They're very content with stagnant, but stagnant doesn't bring dollars into our tax base, it doesn't bring what we want out of this county going forward.
All I was going to say.
Name to name.
Alan McCray. All I was going to say is, we can talk here all we want tonight. I understand what Manfred said about them being monarchs. Unfortunately, they're the group that has the power. I think because of that.
That's wrong. We got the power, trust me.
Yeah, but they have the power that looks in it.
I understand, I understand.
And the only way you can control that power is by being there, present, in force.
And I'm finding you the way.
Yeah, Mike.
All the question again? Yeah. I think you're about to hear, what do you guys think about, or your people think about, maybe for delaying some of the questions here before we go there, and go there and force and have the questions answered?
We might want to hurry to get there, because they might make their break, since there's nobody there, they'll make their break.
Well, isn't, isn't, isn't there an impact in the paper if they break because nobody's there?
You want to go?
All right, let's all, we should move as a group.
Go ahead, Abby.
Wait. Lots of times the Board can limit how long a person can talk. So I would advise that we get some primary questions, and they might look at who is going to talk. So we could move this, be voted over there to decide if these are the major questions that are going to be asked.
What do you mean, be on the same page and have unified front or just spin chaos? I mean, we should have some.
I can assure there.
There should be some standard questions.
Believe me, if you just show up, that's the same.
Good.
Are those people going over there?
I guess, that's my wife, I guess I'm going there. Yeah, better, you're walking home. I'll never hear the end of it.
As it is, seems a little disorganized, but we're good, we're good. It seems like it's the right thing to do, is to go over there, ask the question you want to ask, put them on the spot, and we go there in full power. Is that where we are right now?
Yep. It appears we changed.
You what?
It appears we changed. Let's go.
Yeah. Are we good with that?
Not bad.
Yes.
What's the possibility? If you just go over there and show up, and let's, let's see what's going on, if they're even there, they'll probably laugh it off and gone. But just showing up, being there, staying with everyone, then come back, we'll imagine, and let's go back to a county commission meeting or something like that with our questions. We'll have another forum here.
Okay. Let's go over there.
Go over there, be shown, listen.
Yeah, let's do that. That's okay with you?
Everybody.
Hi, my name is Bob Echelman. I also live here in Eden. My biggest concern is not the fact that we're building and developing Goose Creek. I don't think anyone really has a problem with that. My biggest concern is where the money's coming from, and the fact that between here and, say Springfield, I see quite a few industrial complexes that are sitting empty, that investors went ahead, or communities went ahead and built these facilities, and there's signs up saying, "Space available," and there's no one in that space. And I'm concerned that we're going to end up with the same thing here.
And that's about a concern, but one of the things that we're doing here with partnership and all, Jeff and Shonda will speak to that a little bit, is a work keys program to train people, so that we have good employees that can fit the needs. Probably a lot of these places get to, they go into an area and they can't find qualified employees to staff their facilities, but.
There's a difference, well, let me just back up a little bit, there's a difference between empty facilities and a viable community. Empty facilities, the community is dying. I can show you empty space in Westchester Township. Westchester's still fine, and it's actually a good sign when there is available space. That means there's little churning, and you have a non-workforce and population supplying new industries. Industry doesn't wait for a building to be constructed, it really doesn't, and the way buildings now, especially in distribution, are required to be built are 10 times different than they were two years ago. So sometimes buildings cannot be retrofitted to fit a particular format. In terms of work keys, Preble County is setting the pace statewide in terms of developing our workforce, so that we can supply and be attractive to industry, whether it's an existing space in Preble County or a potential new space in Preble County. We have to have the workforce, the educated, trained workforce, to be able to keep from becoming a dying community. If you think of the community in terms of a grid, your economy, community economy is in terms of a grid, and what you plug in, you plug a business in, money goes into the grid. When you plug residential property in, it takes from the grid to cheaper places. You have to serve the community with additional services. There must be a balance of both work keys, one will shift that balance for Preble County, because we're already known for our strong work ethic here, which puts us in front of the urban centers, because you can supply heads, but you can't necessarily supply the headsters have a good, strong work ethic. Work keys comes at a price. The partnership has committed over $20,000 to invest in that program, so that we will become the first rated certified community county in the state of Ohio. We are being looked at from all over the country on how Preble County is operating their workforce development program. We were just chosen by the state of Ohio, the Ohio Economic Development Association, just to present at the statewide conference, to talk about what Preble County is doing to develop our workforce. That's an attribute that markets itself, that helps us potentially bring new clients, new business interests, new private interests to Preble County. We don't have a large amount of buildings available, so we don't have what the other communities may pre-build prior to the economy taking. We don't have that. And I don't think it's ever been anybody's intention to pre-build anything to reach market. You have private interests, the construction timeline would match the new private company coming in. So it's, again, checks and balances, and making sure that grid operates, so that we all in Preble County continue to keep our quality of life, as well as catch our ladies someone that's sales guy.
I'm going to have to digest that a little bit.
I have a comment. I'm Barbara Willis, can't we? You wanted Goose Creek on the ballot, I think it was on the ballot. Don't ask your one guy, but I walked the streets and basically lost because of Goose Creek. And you didn't win by much, so I think it wasn't.
Anyone else have a question?
I'm Julie Savins, I have to know now. That out there is really helping. If you could get somebody in here that would be interested in that, build that up, that would help the tax base, Abidal Del Vareto, West Manchester, New Paris, the whole shot. That's been set out there for three years. Nobody's interested.
I had just mentioned, I have dealt with 17 prospects. We have one right now. Again, I told you, it was a $200 million investment with 85 jobs to start. I don't know where, the private interest that I deal with in terms of dealing with national site location consultants, companies, existing companies and potential companies, that's what I talk about, private interest. Can you elaborate what your definition of private interest is?
Well, investment capital from a private enterprise, for one thing. Kind of like Romney is going through now, well, when he had this bank capital, when they financed things and they brought things to life. We have people that've got money that would be willing to do something like that, but for the economy, the economy sucks. Our administration, the ones in office now, they've tried solar power, wind power, all these green energy things, and they've all went bankrupt. I don't think Preble County has any business trying to create a business. I don't think it's our responsibility to develop the land and say, "Here, come and get it." Over in Wayne County, the hospital, and the old bus factory, I understand, was bought by a group of people that was going to develop. Put a senior citizen center, whatever, in the hospital. Out at the bus, the old bus factory, they were going to open up a, kind of like a strip model there. Well, that's set and empty. The last ones that was in there went bankrupt. Wouldn't that happen here in Preble County? That's all I've got to say.
Good evening, I'm Brian Duncan. You stole most of my thunder on that. But I did have a couple of things. At this point, what I would say to you as far as businesses, if you've got a lock and done deal, there's no reason to develop that. That company could turn around and walk away tomorrow. As far as the workforce development, I don't feel that's Preble County's responsibility. That is the individual. I worked, I have worked in the automotive industry for 22 years now. The businesses themselves will train the people to do the jobs that they want them to do, and that is not the responsibility of Preble County. As far as, since what you are correct, though, a lot of buildings can't be ready to fit, which is one reason, and if I understand you correctly, we're not talking about actually building, building, we're just talking about getting the ground ready for construction. Buildings can be put up so quickly now, those companies will be more than happy to wait on exactly what they want, if they're going to get exactly what they want. Really, I think that, until you've got somebody locked in, I don't think there's any reason to even consider building over there at this point. Thank you.
You say the private industry.
You say that private industry should train their employees.
Yes, sir. I do it every day.
And we should not be involved, well, yeah, and we should not be involved in workforce development. We are not involved. The Preble County Development Partnership is involved, which is private.
Okay. Well, my message is saying that. Thank you very much.
Brian and I used to work together, so we're doing it together.
Yep. Alan and Craig. Granted, I came in this meeting late, so maybe I'm a little lost here. I thought Goose Creek was dead. I thought that was, but it sounds like this is more of a forum forum than it is talking about what we're gonna do beyond it.
The original, my original understanding was this was a forum on Goose Creek for information. So we just basically took the information, where we were at, where we'd been. At this point, we've taken it about as far as the commission's gonna take it. We had a few things to tie up, loose ends to tie up. But at this point, we know what can go out there. We know what it's gonna take. And that we need to find grants, private sector, whomever that wants to invest in that site.
But it's grants. I mean, in a sense, I'm still paying for that as a taxpayer. You call it grant, but I'm still paying through my state income tax. It's true. So I was still in the paint.
But if you don't take advantage of that someone else will. And if it would be bringing jobs to the area, those grants and things are out there for that reason.
Anyone else have a question?
My name's Eric White. Y'all know me. But one of the most important things when you're in business is advertising. And one thing is a good sign. And I know I mentioned this to you several years ago, that when you come on Interstate 70, going east, and you see the sign for 127, can anybody tell me what it says?
Greenville.
Greenville. Why in the hell have you not got a change in Eden in the last couple of years? I mean, you know, I bet it all it would take would be a call to the state. But I mean, you know, it's just one of the obvious things. And as far as spending taxpayer dollars up there, don't spend mine. You had the chance to run that sewer line down 127, railroad, frontage, everything else. And I really hope when Judge Kessler comes back with his verdict on the Camden wall site, that he asks that there be a grand jury investigation about how that was all done, the scoring system and everything. Because I really, I really just never understood that. But, you know, as far as economic development, running that Leach Ait line to Camden would've been like giving yourself a grant. And I mean, you know, if you can't give yourself a grant, no wonder you can't get one from the state. But that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Anyone else have a question?
Jane Marshall. My question is about the money that you borrowed for sewer and water engineering. And I think last week you transferred $24,000 to pay that note. I think that's just interest. I wanna know how you plan to repay that?
At this point in time, it'll have to come out of the general fund. Until this is developed. Once it's developed, then user fees and.
It's my understanding that was about $485,000 for the two of them in that ballpark somewhere. And my next question is, what have you done with that money? And what term note is that?
20 years, no interest.
So then the $24,000 is just principal? So you've committed us, the taxpayer, to pay for?
Is that low interest or? It's no interest, yes.
Okay. But we're committed to paying that back over 20 years at about $24,000 a year? Is that correct?
Yeah. I mean, I don't have the number in front of me. Yes.
So that money has been paid out, drawn down and paid out?
Yes.
Who got it? Who was it paid to?
It's an OWDA.
OWDA.
I know that, but who was it? What consultant, what engineering firm was it paid to?
That would've been Cleaners and Environmental Engineering Services.
And they've got it all?
I don't have the exact figures, but most of it is paid out, yes.
Okay. And there was another comment made a good while ago by Chris, that I think March 24th, maybe 2010, that said, "If we don't have," and you were talking about Shonda, "if we don't have Goose Creek, we have nothing for Shonda to market." So what do you plan to do with Shonda now that you don't have Goose Creek?
Well, we'll find out from you people what you wanna do in the future. I mean, David said earlier, you don't want anything up there. What do you want?
So is that topic open for tonight?
Sure. I mean, what would you like?
Oh, well, I guess my comments are then, first of all, if you want money to come into the county coffers, why don't you put development out on the Ohio side of Indiana, of Richmond's border? Have y'all seen the Wetzel commercial? They say, "Come shop at Wetzel, whatever it is, Richmond, Indiana, Ohio." So we have half of that exchange. If you want commercial development, you've already got the, you've got the people there. You've got the people. All you need to do is build the stuff, and they will come there. You know, since I've been involved in this, and David, you remember these days, development should occur around existing development where services can be provided. I talked to, yeah, there's Rachel, talked to Rachel today. I said, "Would they develop your corner out there?" "No." I said, "Why not?" She said, "Because there's nothing out there." I said, "You're right. There's no sewer, there's no water." There's no sewer and water up there. And that's why, I mean, it's 10 miles from anything. So that isn't where the development should go. Development go around Eden? Sure. Development go around Camden? Sure. I'll second Eric's comments. The sewer line should've went right straight down through to Camden. You know, around Mooseburg, wonderful places, but don't start, it's not a field of dreams.
Are you quite aware of the areas that she is working on and everything you just mentioned? She's working on, everything.
There's an effort, there is an effort at the state line. We've been working with the property owners for some time to develop a line. There are some other issues up there, and it takes time. It is marketed equally as any other site in the county. All I can do is when a client or a prospect is interested in a developable site in Preble County, I have to follow where the client is saying their interest is. I have not had one interest at the state line in a year and a half. I have had interest in other areas of the county, but I haven't had one. But the property is on there, it's being marketed, it's being talked to at the regional perspective, at the state perspective. I've talked with the local community leadership there to work to develop a plan. It takes time. It is at zero. There are some environmental issues. It will take some time. That is an extreme area of concentration for development, especially probably more on the retail side, as that's what the property owners desire. All they can do is work with the property owners and what they wanna do with the community and what they're willing to do and support development in that side. Because it will cost that community, as well as the county, to develop that site. It takes a lot of people to be on board, and we're always open to ideas and suggestions.
Shonda Collins, the economic development director for the town.
The community understanding that that stuff doesn't come as freely and as easy as it sounds. It takes a plan and it takes time, and that the ball has been rolling for some time. Maybe not as fast as what some people would like. I can't control the speed of it.
Right. I understand that. But it sounds to me like, from listening and hearing and seeing and reading a lot of transcripts, that your ball, all the eggs have been put in one basket, and that basket is Goose Creek. And hence your comment, I think, that if we don't have Goose Creek, we don't have anything for it to market. You know, we have a big building south of town here, that it's my understanding that somebody was really interested in and that wanted some incentives, because that's the next question, is what incentives are you willing to offer? You know, are we gonna give land away at Goose Creek? I don't know that answer, but down here, the only incentive that I understand that this gentleman who wanted to bring a business that was already in Preble County, and then one from Chicago, and merge them both into this, which would be a coup as far as I'm concerned in Preble County, that what they were offered was a Chamber of Commerce membership. I kinda thought that was laughable.
That's just a fair point. I happen to be where I came. I have just talked to that particular business, and I have also been working with the owners for some time. Currently, there is something occurring at that site, in a portion of the site. I cannot just publicly sit out here and say what's going on with that. All I can do, Jane, is say, I'd be more than happy to sit and talk with you about certain things. No, everyone's seen in my office is always open. You know my number. But in that particular site, that building has had a tremendous amount of interest. If somebody wants to, they could bounce for the fact that we have had endless conversations with the property owners and endless amounts of interest. Not the full amount of that whole entire site is now available to me, which limits the possibility to market.
Okay. Then my final comment is, there's a lot of discussion different times about the unemployment rates in the county. And I know, as you should, you want our unemployment rate to go down. And I would encourage you to look at the two counties that usually are at the bottom. I think right now they're at the bottom, Mercer and Holmes County. Neither one of those have an interstate going through it. Both of them are heavily dependent on agriculture, and two different kinds of agriculture. Holmes, you got about as small as you can get, mostly horses. Mercer, you got about as big as you can get, big tractors. And then Holmes has, their secondary thing is all small business. I doubt they have, I've seen one factory up there that would rival what we have here. They have, I think Holmes has 42,000 and change, Mercer has 40,000 and change. I would encourage you to go to them. What have you done?
I work with Mercer County on a weekly basis. They also, they have a very strong economic development department. They have the largest revolving loan fund almost in the entire state. And David backed me up, a few years back, they invested, and that actually was Dart County that did it, just on the north side, invested in some property there, their economic development did. And they partnered directly with Mercer County. They are now grouping together, these counties you're speaking of, grouping together to market themselves for business development. David, you've covered what we have, but I work with them on a weekly basis. And I will say, we are a cluster right along with them, and that is moving forward. But again, the speed that maybe the community feels like things should work at isn't necessarily the way things could work at when you're talking about multiple jurisdictions and multiple village councils, city councils, you know, county commission. It takes time. I'm telling you, we work with them.
Mercer County has, and we may have just said this, has the largest revolving loan fund in the state. And they got that when they had the highest unemployment or one of the highest. And they applied and got state funds. That's where their money, and then it's paid back. And when I was commissioner and how Yoder basically had your job, I volunteered to help him apply for that. Nobody took me up on that.
Jeff can elaborate. We have developed, we have a Preble County Development Partnership revolving loan fund. They have two existing companies invest into that revolving loan fund. That will then allow us to continue to apply for things. That's for a year and a making, so absolutely.
Jane, we're really close to making that happen through the partnership. So through our business development team, we've been working very diligently on that. I would say probably the next partnership meeting, hopefully, we'll have a report. I would say the July meeting, we'll have our revolving loan fund up and running.
Okay. But don't forget Holmes County, because they're about as small a business as you can get, and they do quite well. Thank you.
That's, Jane, I would just like to comment, you're exactly right. Doing a peer analysis against communities that are similar in size or type gives us the ability to really go after fitting businesses, retail for example. What we do is we do peer analysis on communities, just take Eaton for example. There are other communities across the country that maybe has a Starbucks that resides in Eaton. Well, we can write them a letter and say, hey, we have the same population, we have the same income levels, things like that. You should consider this location. So doing a peer analysis based on population and brand and economy is exactly what we should be doing, and that is what we are doing.
Okay. Thank you.
And one thing too also, Mercer County, when they were going through all that, they did invest in an area out along their state routes. They put the infrastructure in. The infrastructure's still in. They haven't filled it all up, but they invested a lot of dollars.
How close was it sewer and water?
I think they had to run, was it water or long half, I don't remember. We visited Mercer County, and their ED director at that time took us all around, showed us what they'd done. But they invested in the infrastructure out there, and they were just, when we were there probably two and a half years ago, three years ago, they were getting ready to invest another big chunk of change in because there was a bit of business looking at that area.
Were they investing in it or were they applying the money, grants?
Both. Both.
But that also, that mile or two is real similar to what it would be if you'd ran the Leach Ait line to Camden rather than to Lockwood.
I got a couple of questions. One is, Jeff, why did you decide to come to this meeting?
Earlier in the meeting, I discussed with you, is that.
With who?
At 7:00 o'clock when the meeting started, I told him basically that as chairperson of the partnership, I felt that I need to be here, and we are a team, okay? Matt Alman Zeller from the chamber invited me to over to Taffey's as well. But I felt that I need to be here to support the commissioners. We are a team for economic development. Missed count.
Yeah. They decided not to come to our meeting. Well, that's okay. That's fine. That's fine. I understand. Understand. Let me ask a couple of questions from the commissioners. One is, in the, I think, believe it was two weeks ago, Bob, you mentioned in the newspaper article of the Register Herald that you're working really hard on economic development. And Chris, one of the meetings, as well, mentioned that literally daily, people looking at Goose Creek and they think. Can you elaborate a little bit more about that and tell us a little more what exciting things are happening right now? Who's coming out and looking at our community and who they're meeting with? And then, yeah, and tell us why it fails.
It fails 100% of the time because of lack of infrastructure, 100% of the time. And you know that Jane serves on the Preble County Development Partnership Board, and that I have discussed with her how the leads and projects are processed and the need for confidentiality as a business owner. If you were wanting to pack up and move to a new location, you certainly wouldn't want your business name exposed, your employees finding out that you're going to leave, things like that. There's reasons why businesses are extremely confidential. 90% of the time, the leads are run through the state of Ohio, Jobs Ohio, the Dayton Development Coalition. They know who the client is, or they know only who the consultant who's running the project is. I mentioned early in the meeting that this year, we've started a set of lead and prospects. Last year, we had 15 for the whole year. I can tell you that before I came, nobody could tell you how many were processed.
What does that mean?
I'm sorry?
What does that mean?
Interest, when somebody, for example, we have a prospect right now, a good example. We had a prospect that was interested in the region. They were looking for 75 acres to build a 350,000 square foot distribution light project. 85 jobs, $200 million investment. They wanted interstate and rail together. Very rare find in Ohio, very rare find in southwest Ohio. Obviously, I called the state and said, "If your client is not finding what they're looking for, would you please consider Preble County? We have multiple sites." Came back and said, the state came back and said, "The client's really wanting rail, and you're just not willing to fit." I said, "Okay, that's fine. Just wanted to stay in front of you as a salesman is my job." Lo and behold, two months later, the client emailed this Jobs Ohio and said, "I wanna see Preble County. What is this Goose Creek?" Therefore, we ended up in a search that we were originally not in because of the particular requirement. I don't know who that company is. I don't know who that company is. The State of Ohio is not going to tell me who that company is. But I can tell you the questions that I've been having to field since the interest has started to ramp up. Where's water and wastewater? Okay, we don't have it. How long will it take to get there? Is the question. They don't, I'm telling you, they don't even want to wait four months. They, they will not wait. Private industry will not wait. They won't wait four months for temporary service. I can get it in writing for you a hundred times in a year. So had, had we had it, and we still, we still haven't been eliminated from this thing, but only because it might meet their construction timeline. And in that case, is that when it is, is that when it may, is that when you want to go about it, is when I have a project? And then we go to decide whether we're going to allow that project to come, or is it okay for us to continue to market the site? And if the company is interested, then yes, we move forward? I think that's a big decision that the community needs to make in terms of their judgment on the viability of that site.
Steve Wenzel, I just want you to talk about a partnership for economic development. What's a partnership do? What good is a partnership? Partnership for what? I don't understand this.
I think the partnership, you were earlier when we first started this session, like through Mass Group, the Chamber, who did a lot of work getting the fundraising for the partnership, by the public, okay? From there, we created the partnership, okay? Alongside working together with the Commissioners, we created ED Director's position, okay? So as a team, through the Chamber, Commissioners-
The Commissioners say one word.
-and the partnership, by the public.
They don't want to be held to it.
I truly feel we've done more for economic development in this county than two years, what, year and a half than in twenty-five years.
Two over, though. Paul, could they have- What's really been accomplished by the partnership and economic development? What has, what has really happened?
I'm not going to debate that tonight, okay?
Could you just tell us what it is? Debate it.
Can you elaborate on what, what are you, you need to clarify that, because I can tell you that we've had a company expand, double in size, that I have not been allowed to publicly announce yet because my office has serviced that project. I have received just last week twenty-five thousand dollars grant money for a potential new company that is considering Preble County. I secured twenty-four, twenty-five thousand dollars in patent work funding for that company. Another existing company that created, that has an invention that needed patent work, I've now gotten him sixteen thousand dollars of grant money to further develop his product. That company also expanded and moved into another building. So the partnership, what they allow me to do, what that funding does, they have funded a marketing plan that allows us to market all over the country. What Preble County is about, whether it's our empty homes that are available, whether it's our empty buildings that are available, whether it's our unemployed that needs a job, we've been able to market those things. We've been able to invest in our workforce. And I will say that the folks involved in the Workkeys program and developing our workforce are companies. They're the ones funding the workforce development program in terms of Workkeys, private industry.
Well, not only that, also we've worked with Sinclair Community College, Wright State University, Kettering Hospital, UTE Hospital, we've became partners with all those entities and other investors within the county and so and so forth. All great net, or assets to, to make things happen. The DVNLs, the Vectrans, I can go on and on what we have become a partner with, with these groups, investing back into Preble County.
Come on, Matt. I can, I can answer that part if you'll be allowing me to. Prior to the partnership being started, there was a reputation in the county that, that the city and the county weren't getting along and nothing was being done as far as economic development. And we were able to get some partners together, mainly from the private sector. Once we started raising funds, you know, the county wanted to hire an Economic Development Director, but they didn't have enough taxpayer money to support all of the functions of that office. On the other hand, the money that we raised, you know, we had some money over here, but we couldn't afford to hire an employee.
Was that taxpayer money you had over here?
We have about seventy percent of it is private sector funds. The rest of it is from, what's coming from the county is only paying Shonda's salary and the office over there.
That's taxpayer money too, then?
That's part of that, of the thirty percent, okay? We have contributions from about thirty-eight different organizations. Six of them are public sector, and that includes the City of Eaton, Village of Lewisburg, Village of West Ellis Adria, West Manchester, and I know I'm forgetting someone here. But we also have Sinclair Community, we have education institutions as well, we have Sinclair Community College. But the point is this, your original question was, you know, what have we accomplished? Well, the first thing is, economic development would not have been able to get started without the two of those parties working together, because they didn't have enough money here to start and support an office, and we didn't have enough money to actually hire someone. So that's the first accomplishment.
So what you did is you got the money. That was an accomplishment.
If you would please allow me to finish your original question. Thank you. We have since gone into several different committees. One of them is a Business Development Committee, we have Marketing Committee, and we have a Workforce Development Committee. And the Business Development Committee, as was mentioned before, we are currently having paperwork reviewed, legally reviewed by Jane Schreier, to start a revolving loan here, fund here in the county. It's the first time revolving loan fund has ever been started in this county, so that's an accomplishment. We have started a, it's not going as fast as what everybody would like, but we are starting to do business retention visits, which as a county, county-wide, we were not doing before. And Shonda has been working with employers, she goes to those employers, finds out what their needs are, follows up with them, and then tries to service those needs. On the workforce end of things, we have rolled out a program called Work Ready Community. And Work Ready Community is actually something that they're doing in the entire states of South Carolina, North Carolina, Georgia, Oklahoma, those are some of them. And in Ohio here, no one has been able to sort of pool together the resources to get something like that started. And rather than waiting on the State of Ohio to get permission from them to do it, we've decided as a county to pursue Work Ready Community status through ACT. And we're going to be the only, right now, we're the only county in the state of Ohio who has set that as a goal. And we actually have people from, from Hamilton County and Miami County wanting to know what the heck we're doing, so they can either model us or even pull together resources. So those are just three of the accomplishments, or three or four of the accomplishments. Do I, you know, if it were me, would I want us to have about eight or nine or ten different accomplishments? Yeah, but you know, things just don't happen as fast as we'd like. But I hope that that answers your question.
One of our, one of our accomplishments then is we're impressing the rest of the state how good we are. That's sort of a-
Within that Work Ready Community status, we've been, we've been able to test, every high school senior, assess them on what their practical skills are. And within these assessments through Workkeys, these students know what jobs that they qualify for now, and with some training, what jobs that they will qualify for later based on the aptitude that they're storing now.
That's in the school system, yeah.
So we were, we started the partnership.
Okay. Could I ask one more question?
Sure.
I got a sign in my front yard, you know what I think of Goose Creek more if I can move it down here and corn that's on. Would that be okay? Have you seen my sign?
Oh, yeah.
Can I move it down here?
No.
I'm done, thank you.
I have a question. I'm Debbie Hornbrook, and as a realtor in this community, my biggest concern is what goes on in the middle of our town. If a lot of people, if they develop out by the interstate, I have seen what has happened at Brookville, Ohio. If anybody has been to Brookville, Ohio, you know that there's, it's like a little ghost town. And most of the activities are going on up by the interstate. If you look at Richmond, Indiana, everything downtown Richmond, Indiana is more or less a sort of a ghost town, and all the activities are out by the interstate. Now, my question is, why would we not develop from our communities from the inside out? Why do we have to build a whole new community? I don't understand it, and if I could get a good feel for that, it might be, I would be able to help promote economic development if I had a good feel for that myself. Can anybody explain that to me?
I think it's both, Deb. I think you're right. I think, I think it would be nice if the city continued to grow. There's a lot of development sites in the city that are equally as marketed as others. Access to interstate is a driving factor. And the City of Eaton is very, is situated right for them, because it's within five, within five miles, your site specifically, it's within five miles of interstate, and that's great. And, and you're right, those sites are equally as valuable. I think we want to disagree in terms of what it could do to the interstate, it could bring more people to Eaton, to more opportunities for industry. And I think in, in the case of Eaton expanding is something probably a little bit more, that question probably is better suited for the city and the townships on what they're willing to do together to expand the development possibilities, because that's outside of, that's outside of what I feel is, all I can do is mark your site and try to work with those, those community leaders in the city and the townships to get them to maybe consider expanding services into those sites.
Well, and then another question comes to mind is, you know, about a year ago, we tried to get a piece of property zone commercial that would be on the outskirts of Eaton, and it was refused by the Commissioners. And I'm still not clear why that is, but you even said so yourself in this meeting that if you don't have the infrastructure there, they won't call on it, they're not interested, because it takes a while, a while to put it there. So we're in the same situation on the property just north of Eaton, and you know which property I'm talking about. And, yeah, and I mean, we, we could not get the county to approve, Commissioners, you guys turned it down, that we are, you won't let us have commercial zoning there. We're perfect for that. The infrastructure is right there. It will not cost you nearly as much money as it would to build a whole new community up by the interstate. And so my question is, why would we choose spending millions of dollars up by the interstate to put infrastructure in when it wouldn't cost us nearly as much to grow our borders?
We can't put certain types of manufacturing on your site specifically.
We weren't asking for manufacturing.
Well, I know that that's what Goose Creek was designed for, was manufacturing to where it, that's, I, it will not go over well.
I thought that was a commercial overlay. I thought you were trying to get commercial up there.
No, it's been, it's been a mix of manufacturing. I, I will have to say, I have never seen any of the other districts, I don't, I can't speak to you in terms of that, but I can tell you that the focus has always been manufacturing. And if you, if you actually look at the way the site is laid out, engineered, they are manufacturing and distribution facilities on the site plan.
Well, we, we have a manufacturing plant just south of town that I was the realtor that was involved in what was Moronda Homes, I was the realtor involved in that. And just to clarify something, you were involved with the county at the time that we were proposing that, and many of you that's in this room was at that meeting when we were trying to get Moronda, to sell Moronda Homes to a company. Well, we lost them to Inglewood, because Inglewood promoted more economic development, gave them some perks, and we came back with a Chamber membership. And if there's nothing wrong with the Chamber membership, that's great, but when you have Inglewood promising them all kinds of bells and whistles, we can't compete with that. So if you guys were truly trying to promote manufacturing, then why didn't we try to get those people here?
We, we did try. I spoke to, I, okay, I, I have emailed, I have, I spoke to that person, corresponded through email, that in the business that was brought up earlier, the one that has the other site in Chicago is it, I can remind you.
Mm-hmm, it was Chicago.
There are issues with that. I'll just say the State of Ohio is taking control, has also eliminated themselves from that project. So it's not as clean and clear as it may sound. There's, there's a bit more dynamics to it than what is being said tonight. That project, if it goes to Inglewood and it gets everything it was promised, I can guarantee that State of Ohio will not be a part of that.
Well, I'm wondering why I'm not getting any correspondence from the Commissioners on this. Can you guys share some information with me? You guys were involved in that meeting that we all attended, and there were several of us that were there. Can you guys address why that was not pursued a little stronger? I know Shonda was just coming on board at the time, she was here, but she was just coming on board, so she was kind of, you know, on the outskirts, kind of looking in, just getting involved in that. But your Commissioners were all involved in it, so can you share with me why we didn't pursue that a little stronger?
Well, at that time, and at this time, we don't have any incentives we can offer. That's one of the things, this is the next step that we have to work for. Inglewood, Inglewood has incentives that they could offer, and they also have-
They, they have an edge fund, it's not, it's not an incentive, we need to be clear. Incentives statewide are set, they were sunshine a long time ago. Anything that we could offer as an incentive would be above and beyond, it would be taxpayers' dollars. Edge Fund, which was used as an attraction tool for this project, is a, it was a one-time economic development tax on citizens to fund incentives, or not even incentives, dollars for that particular project, so it's, it's a little bit more-
This would have created-
Ashen, unfortunately, Edge program in Montgomery County, and we lost a business in Lewisburg to Montgomery County.
Can you tell people what it is?
It's economic development, government equity program, thank you. The county, the county, the county from Montgomery County has three million dollars in that fund every year from the sales tax, okay? Now, and Montgomery County has a whole lot more money than what we have here. But what happens is, a company that wants to locate or, or retain can apply, or actually the city or the village can apply on behalf of the company through Montgomery County Commissioners. I just know, we lost a company from Lewisburg to Brookville. Good jobs, they got two hundred and fifty thousand dollars free money from the county. We can't compete with that. I mean, I understand what he's, I mean, we can't do that. They're trying, we're trying to do programs here, work through the partnership, work through the Commissioners, work, you know, the state and so and so forth. But when you have a neighboring community or county that can offer that-
You know, part of economic development is manufacturing and doing what we can get to, to have manufacturing here. As a real estate agent, daily, we see people lose their homes because they don't have employment, they're losing their jobs. And it's a sad situation. You wouldn't believe how many people out there that we have sold homes to have foreclosed because they have no employment in this county. And I think as part of economic development, we need to pursue all the manufacturing opportunities we have, and if that is something that the Economic Development Partnership is supposed to be in charge of, make that a priority. We need jobs here, and we don't need to have a high unemployment rate so that we can get government grants for some Goose Creek place up there.
Well, just like from a partnership standpoint, we have formed our, I always have a hard time saying this word, Strategic Planning Committee. We've had a couple meetings, and we did a pre-questionnaire survey with that committee through Sinclair Community College. We met this past Friday, we had a great session, I thought. I think a lot of those things that everybody's bringing up tonight is what kind of brought out of our meeting on Friday, and one of the, kind of a lot of the focus around the whole perimeter of that meeting was adding jobs to the county. And so, no, I'm just saying, so we are, we are working towards that. And, you know, it's, it's work in progress, and economic development unfortunately doesn't happen over time. But we, but we really are working- But we, but we really are working as a group here between the commissioners and ED Director and Mass Group and so on and so forth to, to make a better economic development in the county. We really are, you know? And I think playing the strat plan, I always call it the strat plan, but I can't say that word, will help us do that. I really do.
In terms of manufacturing though, the, back to the workforce development efforts that we were talking about, the manufacturers in the county have made it clear that the available workforce does not have the skills that they want or need. The local employers and not only local, region, there's 700 manufacturing jobs available in the Dayton region. Those employers are saying that the workforce is not skilled. So, what we've done to be proactive, to be able to recruit high-end manufacturing jobs is we first of all, work with our existing manufacturers to find out what they want and need, what they expect out of the workforce, what they expect out of community, that they expect the community to invest in quality of life, invest in infrastructure, invest in healthcare, multiple different things. We listened to our employers. We knew that we had to do something about our workforce. That is how we got to the Workforce Development Plan and the Work Keys Initiative. So, for us to recruit manufacturing, we began that process a long time ago with our workforce development mission.
Well, I'm all for economic development if it's done properly. I think we need to get manufacturing here because I'm tired of seeing our citizens of this community lose their homes because they have no jobs. And we see it in real estate on a day-to-day basis and we want something done. So, if the economic development partnership is going to work on something, my, and the commissioners, my suggestion is concentrate on getting some employment here and do whatever makes economic sense and that's economic feasible, not spending millions of dollars somewhere that is not going to benefit anyone and it's just going to cost taxpayers' money. So, that's my concern.
If I can just add to that, one of the things that is affecting us is actually a macro trend that is affecting rural areas all across the country. Rural population as a percentage is at historical lows. And Preble County is no different. We are losing population. And I use, if anyone has ever seen my presentation on this, I use a slide from an article about exactly that, that says something to the effect of businesses won't come to rural counties because there aren't enough qualified workers and workers won't move to rural areas because there aren't enough jobs. And so, you have a downward spiral. And I actually put that slide up there. That's kind of where we find ourselves right now. So, the only thing we can immediately try to control is start, you know, getting focused on, on workforce development effort and trying to get data for feedback, feedback from our employers, hey, what are our needs? But I absolutely agree with you. The biggest problem in, that we have, I think, is just jobs. You know, we have approximately, according to the last figures, we have a workforce of about 21,200 people and we only have about 7,800 private sector jobs. And half of those are being worked by, you know, people who are from out in the county. It's just the normal labor inflow out from there. So, we, we need to get more jobs.
I have a question. My name is Michael Moore and I hear we talking about out there, we're talking about manufacturing out there. You can drive up and down seven years, industrial parks everywhere empty. I mean, why aren't we thinking out of the box? It's obvious, the list you talk, everybody's ahead of us. We should have been doing this years ago. Okay? But I'm saying, if manufacturing, I mean, look, they're going to put the horse track down Dayton, that's what, that's really what it drives. Why don't we think out of the box and use that property for something out there? Because I'm telling you, if you sit here and wait on manufacturing, we'll be here five years from now having the same problem. Well, I mean, not just race tracks, but I'm just saying, every time we...
I, I would say we are. I can tell you that we service any interest that's interested in that side or any other side in the county.
Okay, well, so you, you can talk on that, what if you guys can look into budget? There's no potential people, so what are some of the ideas you guys have?
I will tell you, at one point, there was an extremely large retailer in, in Preble County, an extremely large destination retailer. That happened way before me, we weren't ready.
I did not know that.
So, we, we just, we just wanted, we just want to work together to develop a plan so when the next one comes, it could be different. It could be, you know, I know, at least at the state line, the property owners there are specifically interested in retail. So, you know, they have an idea. Basically, we just need to tell people who Preble County is, and somebody said something about we spent money telling people about how great we are, well, yes, we have.
But I mean, today, the whole discussion has been about bringing in manufacturing. I'm telling you, if you're sitting there waiting on that boat, I mean, we'll be here for a long time. Because there's, you can drive out there and you know that, there's industrial parks everywhere empty. There's buildings, there's buildings all over Dayton that you could walk right into.
You asked for specifics, sir, and so, let me give you another couple examples. We also, the commissioners met with the Director of Agriculture up, in Columbus, and we talked to him specifically about agribusiness. We even spoke to the radio from the Farm Bureau there specifically about agribusiness because we are an agricultural county. And I can tell you, the Director of Agriculture gave us a lead on a, it was a seed corn company that wanted to locate somewhere in west, west-central Ohio. Well, we had applied for it or told them we were interested, but we were, we were left out because, get this, basically, when these executives spouses get off the jet that they fly in on for a meeting, they want to be able to go to the high-end boutiques, the high-end, they want to go to the Polaris Mall, you know, right away. And we're not anywhere close to, to some high-end malls. So, I'm just giving you an example that we did meet for agribusiness, you know, and we're still pursuing agribusiness opportunities here in Preble County.
We just had a tour with a, with a, what's the, what's the type of...
It was an agro.
It was an agribusiness and it was fertilizer. And we were in competition with a couple other states and actually, we, we fared the best and we just didn't have what they wanted. But no, believe me, we have multiple different selling points and we have, what's great, as David alluded to, is we have great partners. We are now actively working with the Department of Ag in terms of developing an agribusiness mission and we have a committee that focuses specifically on that. We've reached out to the Farm Bureau to incorporate their input in terms of what we can do for agribusiness development. We know who we are, we want to use it as part of the solution.
I appreciate that, but I'm saying, once again, we keep looking at the same ideas. You know what I'm saying? We need, we keep looking at the same ideas and if we're going to keep running into, we're not going to have a Polaris Mall here. I mean, it's telling you, you're going to run into that with, you know, maybe we need to develop the Polaris Mall, you know what I mean?
We've taken any, any leads that's come down the pikes. We've looked at, and we've looked outside the box. There's a couple other things that we looked at that if this would have been 20 years ago, they may have landed here. Unfortunately, with the tough economic times, those are going to the higher populated areas. So, you're in increased competition, but we still have to try to prepare ourselves to be ready so that we can take advantage of that. And the other part of that is, you talk about the downtown areas and the downtown businesses, those are really hard to get someone that can come into these buildings and, and make that fit for them. I've, I've dealt with them on several areas in, in West Alexandria and you get a business that comes in, they really like the building, but then they find out they can't make it meet code and, and things of that nature. So, those are, that's another tough issue versus a, a business that can come in, walk into a newer building that's getting access and things like that. So, that, that's another battle that we have to take into consideration.
I will also say that we have, we are working with the same parallels as the Dayton region. They've identified four areas of strength in four target markets. Obviously, we are taking advantage of Wright Pat, our location to Wright Pat, and quite a few of our people, our residents work at Wright Pat. I can tell you, some communities like Lewisburg is heavily populated by folks that work at Wright Pat, so there's spinoffs in the aerospace industry. Because we're a part of the Dayton Development Coalition, we're able to latch on to their initiatives that are based in high-end paying jobs, not necessarily service sector jobs of all sorts.
They're not having no better luck than we are. I used to deal with them before I retired, they're not having a better luck than we are.
Well, I would open any of your ideas or suggestions of what we could do to be different.
But, but we're at the table and, and we're trying to make it, make them know that whatever we need to accommodate this, we're open to doing that, you know? So, before, we weren't even at the table.
I, I don't want to come off as being questioning everything you would say, and that's not my intention, but we also know that you guys are going to move in the direction that the community pushes you into. And, you know, a lot of us think that, you know, that's just not going to happen out there, maybe we need to look at something else. And that's one of the reasons I'm saying that. You don't have to defend what you're saying or thinking, but I'm just telling you, that's what my thoughts, and a lot of people feel like that too. That's a great op, that's a great piece of property out there, if we could get the right thing now.
Right. We're working with the other communities, you know, Jeff, Jeff from Lewisburg, there's work being done, but there's limitations there also. I mean, it's, everybody's got certain limitations, they have to work with them. And until we had this initiative, the individual communities had no one to go to, they had no one to work with. Now, the goal is to pull everyone together and work in the same direction. You know, if it's not a fit for my community, that's fine, but we got another community over here, why don't you go talk to Jeff and see if we can get it in your community? That's the thing that never was there before. The goal is to try to get it in Preble County somewhere. And that's the, the whole, this whole partnership, and that's why we're all sitting here together. We've worked on putting everybody together, it's not going to happen overnight. But as Jeff said, we've made great strides to get to this point, but we're 20 years behind the curve. I'm not making excuses, I'm just stating facts. And we all knew that going in. It's unfortunate, but you got to start somewhere. And I appreciate your input because we are looking at every option, trying to think outside the box. Unfortunately, that box gets small sometimes.
We do appreciate your ideas, share them with us, with Sean in particular, what you may have.
Don't you think we don't have enough of these meetings? I mean, this meeting would have not have happened if we hadn't decided to have a meeting. We all could agree on that, right? I mean, you didn't plan this meeting same time as I did, right? Well, you know, so don't you think there should be more? Go ahead, Jeff.
Real quick, Amber, that's what I'm saying, that's one of the things that came out of meeting on Friday, our strat plan, is that we need to maybe have more communication with, between the commissioners and, and the partnerships as well as investors. So, that's in process. I do agree with that.
Well, I think it's about the public as well. They're citizens, there has to be some accountability. And if I would ask the question today, the commissioners, do you know what this community really wants? Do they want economic development or do they not want economic development? Do they want to be a sleepy, small community or do they want growth? Do you know the answer?
Matt, wasn't that in, wasn't that in a survey that was done by the Chamber to determine whether the partnership could ever be formed?
Well, the feasibility study, that's a different, with a pool of 50 leaders.
But, but real quick again, this is Amber's question maker, I think we're going to get that accomplished through our plan, I really do. Now, this may not happen overnight, in the next few months, that's all going to come to fruition. We're having an investor day at the New Amphitheater on July 13th. We have a save the date we sent out to our investors. You know, we're going to communicate with them that day. So, I think it's work in progress, but I agree with you, we are in the process of making it happen.
Make what happen? What about the...
No, no, it's public too as well.
How best can we communicate with you? Because we, we do a lot on the register here, we have a lot of meetings, we have a lot of open meetings, the Chamber hosts a ton of events where we, we go through this process. I, I think my question is, how do you want to be communicated with? Because outside of the papers...
Some of the cafes are open forum instead of...
I think that's what it is, I think, I think that's what it is, that's where it got to where it felt like it's you guys against us. You were invited, you know, to come over, we're going to, you know, someplace, then it got to be, we had to march over here. Well, I don't understand why we should be working together. I mean, that's, I think that's the point, I think you feel there's frustration, but it feels like you guys feel like it's you against us, but really, I think you're my team.
Unfortunately, as Jeff said, communications is not what, what the public sector does well. And, and that's something that we need to work on, I won't...
You gave the okay to come to the meeting. What was wrong with the communication? You gave the okay that you wouldn't be at the meeting, is that correct?
Yes, I did.
Okay, there you go.
You changed the agenda.
I did not, what, what possibly changed from what we discussed here today?
We're not going to get into that right now. We're going to...
That's why, we are, we are, we are, we are the people. You are servants of the public.
I understand that.
So, why do you want to cut me off?
You're here.
Yes.
You can voice your concern.
I am trying to.
That's what we're doing right now. We want to know what you want to do with economic development. You just asked a question and didn't get answered. What do people want? Everybody in here says jobs, right?
We don't want nobody wasting their money here.
Okay. Where, what ideas do you have to get jobs? That's what we need to know.
These are questions that you should survey before you even went forward and start spending money.
Do you see a pattern here? I mean, do you see a pattern of not communicating with the public? If it's in deep field, if it's all the other issues, do you see a pattern? I mean, I do.
Can I answer Barbara's question? Barbara, going back to 2003, there was a CED report, it's a Community Economic Development Strategy or Study. And they identified that 127 I-70 was the best location to, to try to attract development. So, that's all I'm going to say about that, Barbara. If there was a study, we just didn't randomly do it. There was a bus trip around the county that had a bunch of local state officials from the governor's office on down to local. And we took that bus trip, we showed state line, and even when we passed through the state line, the old state line truck stop, there was a lady from Chevron doing the assessments at the time. She comes in once a month and checks the aeration, what they're doing up there to try to clean the state line up.
That's okay, Dave, but you're...
No, we went to I-70 and we went to Lewisburg and we asked them, if we go after grant money from the state of Ohio, where would it best be identified?
Who were you asking?
It was, it was a, a group of people, but two of the guys were Kevin Carver and this from the governor's office. It was the governor on down and it was the state people who were asking.
So, you're, you're fine with, we're going to spend the people's money without asking them? You're asking...
No, it was, it was also local people, Barbara.
I never feel unsurveying.
Like I said, back in 2003, you weren't even aware of that.
My only objection, my only way of objecting is at the ballot, at the ballots.
Okay.
Yeah, that's where we are now.
Let's hear from William.
Okay. My name is William Dorr. I'd like to know from all the attended bodies here, how many grants and other monies have you sought for any other project except for the state? Anything that you folks sought any money to develop, bring new Parris's water and sewer out from the state line? So, private individuals would be there and help clean up and, and build facilities? Secondly, I'd like to know why the conveyance fee, which was raised supposedly and to be dedicated for economic development, continues to pour into the general fund unabated? Three, why the Fed tax was raised to an uncompetitive level to every, every county around us? Okay? You, you talk a good game on, you know, we want to bring in a cabalas at Exit 10. We want high-end retail. Well, folks, high-end retail is not coming to Preble County for two reasons. One, because we don't have the population. Two, we don't have the income. You need those to attract cabalas and Bass Pro and Abercrombie and Finch and all of the Banana Republic stores that people, that these, wise of these CEOs want to shop at. You're going to have to attract a lot, but first, before you, before you get the egg, the golden egg, you're going to have to create the chicken. And by doing that, you have to build at the state line and county's. But, what you did was you... But, what you did was, you bought, overpaid for a chunk of land out there with just a little sliver of it on 127, so you can have a 127 address, and what's it got us? You have no water and sewer facilities out there, you planned a tunnel under four lanes of I-70, and hooked TAs, truck stops into the Petro to create water and sewer facilities that you're going to need for any development. Ms. Combs said, well, it's supposed to be manufacturing, well, over at National Show, it was, well, we're going to have retail development, we're going to have a traffic circle like they have up in Greenville, so people can sit there and wonder if it's their turn next, if they can survive getting through it. You know, Goose Creek has become whatever, something to everyone, whomever you were in front of at the time, I'm sure that if there was a group in here that wanted to make chickens the national bird, there would be an office or a building set up for them at Goose Creek. You know, it's not we put our limited resources where it can go best, that's, in my opinion, it's at the state line, $5 million can push New Paris's water and sewer out there, around and back to the village, $17 million at Exit 10, out in the middle of nowhere, there's a cost benefit ratio there that the state has this. You know, it's all fine and good to have a good plan for Exit 10, but are you expecting people to drive through two truck stops worth of traffic to try to make a really quick right turn before they get crushed by an A.T. Wheeler? I talked to Paul Rain, Jeff Kyle's stepfather, he said, he told me that there was a survey done, one of these, he got, you guys got together, and his commission spent money on it, and they said that people are less likely to go into areas where, especially women, can do the majority of the shopping, are less likely to patronize any place that has anything to do with large tractor trailers. Okay? And you've got two of them out there, I've been out at 127 and 70, when the truckers were coming off, and lining up down the ramp and onto the interstate, you can't get through there, but you're going to put a huge distribution, manufacturing, retail establishment place out there, which is going to do what? Exacerbate the problem. Then you have Orphans Road, two-lane road, how much is it going to cost to expand that to at least five lanes?
I love the good time, I've got a lot of questions. Didn't hear no answer, one.
How much, how much money have you applied, let's start from the beginning, how much money have any of you applied for, for anything else other than Goose Creek?
Okay, for infrastructure projects, zero, but for existing companies to expand, what, I will tell you in the hundreds of thousands, which we have one that has not yet publicly been announced.
Who are the businesses?
I am, I cannot publicly announce...
The what? This is our tax money.
No, 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 hold on a second, this is a public, this, again, this is a business who's expanding.
Right.
Okay, doubling in size, who got a state incentive to expand, that came through our program, sure tax dollars, but if we don't, we could have lost that employer, instead, we want jobs or we don't, we've got to keep the balance, my job is to keep them, we got, I can tell you that we've gotten hundreds of thousands of dollars back into Preble County instead of losing those jobs. We also, in terms of grant dollars, we've gotten nearly $50,000 for existing companies, small businesses, to either expand their product, or get patent work done for free.
Who are they?
Who are they?
Yeah.
Teamwork Manufacturing is one of them, the other two are in the process, and, you know, again, confidentiality rules, I would respect your business decision if I were working with you, and I just would ask that be the same...
I don't ask for tax money.
No, but you're right, but you, I wouldn't want you to leave Preble County either, if it was my job to help you find whatever was available to you, it comes out of the right pocket, we need to work to get it in the left pocket, if it's coming out, whether we like it or not, we need to get it in the left pocket.
So, and one thing that you said wasn't clear, was how much you've applied for and how much you've actually gotten.
Applied for, we've gotten all the money that we've applied for.
But I...
For, for business expansion.
And that's how much money?
It's over, it's probably around $200,000, at least 150 of it was for one particular project.
Okay, so that should be, if you've been awarded that, that should be public information that you can share.
It hasn't been, it hasn't been finalized, it's been awarded, we've been, the company accepted the terms, the state has set the funding aside for the project, as soon as the company is comfortable with announcing what they're doing, starting the construction, then it will be publicly announced.
And that's at the state line?
No, it's in another community in the county.
Has anything been ever applied for, for the state line, to help New Paris expand their infrastructure?
Not yet, but I will tell you, I've talked to the community leaders, and the comparison you gave in terms of prices, give the infrastructure into Goose Creek, I don't believe it was $17,000, I thought it calculated to around, the initial phase in Goose Creek, the number you gave at the beginning of the meeting, was it $17,000? The very first, I think it's around six or seven?
Yes.
Right, so, comparison to that, there's, there are cost estimates already at the state line, our office is aware of that, and have talked to the leadership of multiple communities in the area that would be willing to partner to move that on, to work together with the partnership and other community leaders to apply for funding, because it takes more than my office, it takes more than the commissioners, it takes more than the township, it takes more than the village, it takes us all together to do it.
Conveyance?
Conveyance fee, yeah.
What was the question?
Why isn't the conveyance fee been dedicated to economic development while it continues to pour into the general fund? Wasn't that why you folks raised it?
It goes into the general fund, but it's marked and tracked.
No, it's not earmarked, but it should be, I'll agree with that.
It's not earmarked, I said it's marked.
Yeah, it should be earmarked.
And tracked.
Just, I'll make some questions.
And we know how much money's been taken in to date, and we know how much money's been expended for economic development, that's on a report that we get every Monday from the media.
David, you brought up Kevin Carver as being on this bus ride, and I'm going to ask you how long the bus was, but the, Kevin Carver was in here January 25th, 2010, before he was turned down a second time on a drop ready site ramp, he and Rooster Rose asked about rail out there, you know, that very morning, you guys voted to send that Leach A line to Locken Grant, granted, you weren't part of that boat, instead of Camden, so to say that economic development is doggone in this county, when things are done like that, and when you sit here, those issues need to be addressed, and that is why you have people unhappy, I mean, you have, like Eric Whitehead said, there is rail, there is highway there, and it wasn't taken, we're going over the country and through the woods, that upsets people, now, twice rail was an issue there, twice we were turned down, it may have been the first time, I don't know, but, you know, seven and a half million, I think is what the number was for the water and sewer, but, you know, a few years before that, first time out, it was 30 million, I think, it was in the Daily Business Journal, something around that number, do all four pluggings, so you're pretty much in that ballpark in one quarter, but still, it's a lousy location, I don't care, and I'm tired of hearing it's a great location, there is nothing on 127. When we say that we're marketing everything the same, when you look at the website, and you have 30.29 acres sitting behind a truck stop in a motel, and that website shows property, unless you have an unknown option to buy, sitting on 127, it's misleading, so don't tell me we're marketing everything the same, because we don't have this fancy picture on the web of a potential, what the site will look like, and the same as manufacturing, I can remember Steve Simmons being in here talking about Bullards, I mean, this, it is inconceivable to me, she's not familiar with the commercial overlay, she's the Economic Development Director, you know, this is where the idea of things being disjointed, and I'm sure she's busy, but if she's the Economic Development Director, and she's telling you she doesn't have any knowledge of this commercial overlay, which is across the street a number of times, I saw Katie last time, or two times ago, I guess, it doesn't make any sense to people, and let me just say one more thing, you want to interact with the public more, they can't get here at nine o'clock in the morning, and they're not going to get here if you have a meeting at night, these meetings should be on the internet, I contacted Shonda, David, Connie, and Matt about a recent meeting on Jeds and all kinds of other stuff, it sounded like a very good meeting, I sent news 10 days prior to it, put it on the, you know, video it, and put it on the internet, you're not going to get a bunch of trustees, who have other things to do, show up at 7:30 in the morning to do that, but if they have the ability to look at it anytime on the internet, I mean, it is not hard doing that, it should have been done, it should be done in the future, it's inconceivable that we keep saying, well, we have an uneducated public as far as the policies are concerned, we don't do anything to educate them on it, let's get that done.
They have no interest, let's face it, you have no interest, they showed up, over 50 people showed up at Taffies, over 50 people, it was packed, it was packed to the max, you just talk about being together as a team, where was that team? Where was you, where was your team playing, Commissioner? What was your team playing? If it wasn't, there was nothing wrong to have it over there, there was absolutely nothing wrong, this is what the people wanted.
Question along these lines, I'm Ray Potter, taxpayer, I'm here as a taxpayer, I'm concerned about the far-reaching implications of the commissioners arbitrarily canceling a forum, is this going to happen the next time a group wants to meet? Don't do that again, please.
My name's Jeff Henson, this man here was standing talking earlier about unqualified health, coming to this town, comes from a small community, I've got 18 years in maintenance, and I've got 17 years of construction, I can't get a job in this town, guy from the state told me, well, at 58 and a half, I was too old, and I worked out organized labor, and I wasn't going to work in Eaton, Ohio. Now, how do you guys let that go on? Another thing, you got a little Dicky Loves Truck Stop in Richmond, Indiana, people kept getting killed over there, they had dropped people, 45 were still having trouble, semi pulling out in front of them, and now you want to build a community out there, or a factory with... I don't understand, I don't understand what you guys are thinking at all, I mean, I'm stupid, I'm a construction worker, you guys are probably big business people, I don't know, I got more sense to build something like that unless you reroute that whole traffic system out there. Jeff Kappa got A on by the community in Richmond, so he got to speed them at 45 mile an hour, the coke with the semis pulling out in front of people. You guys talk about bringing business out here, bringing future income to the county, promote the county, all this, when you've got places that won't even come out here, I don't understand that, you should have been, what Richmond did, which I don't know, heard Bobby talking, I'm sorry, but you're real related.
Debbie.
Debbie talking, they had all the income from the factories in Richmond, Indiana, Carp and, well, Wayne Works, Dana, all them places, big income, so what happened was your League of 100, which was mostly business people and higher-up citizens of the community, they didn't want that riffraff living in their community, they wanted them factories people out of there, they wanted them to come in and build money for them, they didn't want them living near them, so they closed the plant down, look at Richmond now, it's a dump, nobody wants houses sold for $50,000, if you can sell them, corruption, total M law, it's pitiful, now, if you guys want that for your community, if these people here let that happen, that's ridiculous. Sorry, I'm just telling the truth, that's the way it works.
Eric Green, New Paris, I came this evening, the first to Taffies, and here as well, to listen to both sides of commissioners, Shonda and the development partnership, as well as the community as a whole, to figure out and listen to their opinions and views as far as economic development in the county. I've met with Shonda and members of the development partnership, Chamber, Matt Affenzella, you're asking for opinions and views to what we should do as a county to move development forward, whether you should continue with it, don't continue with it, what have you. I've been out and talked with many people, just like you do as well, I think a lot of what you have here, and where you've got to the point where you're at, is public perception, public perception is key, I've talked with Shonda, I don't blame the partnership then, but a lot of it falls back on the commissioner's laps, you have got leadership from years back to now, that has gotten us where we're at, everybody makes decisions whether they are good, bad, or otherwise, I don't think anybody intentionally has done things to circumvent anybody in the county, but you ultimately make decisions, and if the decision is made, you stand behind them, right, wrong, or indifferent, I think leadership as a whole, it seems like to this point now, you have been, I think what Shonda's done, with the partnership, and you talked about that, three and a half, I would have to agree, as a member of the Board of Education at National Trail, education is going to be key in order to move any type of business into the area, you've got to educate your workforce, starting with your youngsters all the way up, it's not going to happen otherwise, your partnership, my opinion, a lot of people I've talked with, in and out of the private sector and through the businesses, I'd agree, I would continue on with your partnership, partnerships afford opportunities, I'm largely behind that, support that, I think if you explain it to people well, take it to them, and answer questions, good, bad, or otherwise, you may get stuck up here and run over the coals in the process, but that's part of being in a public life and in a public position, I've been on the right side of the issue, and the wrong side ultimately, and not afraid to stand up and take the heat, you gentlemen are doing it this evening, this was your choice to come here, what have you, I applaud the group for bringing it over here to them, like I said, as just an outsider coming in, I got it out of the paper myself, so the right way to get people involved, I think you're doing some things, but ultimately hitting the right niche to get people involved, I don't know what the correct answer is, but open all avenues, if it's Facebook, if it's Twitter, whatever you've got to do, continue the paper, have meetings in the evenings, like Mr. Golden said, he talked about the meeting that was a few weeks ago, had it for the Jeds Economic Summit, there was a pretty good turnout, but actual elected officials, it wasn't real great, have it again, I think the information of it was fantastic, you're going to have to think outside of the box, as many of them said here today, and not continue on the same old path, I think continuity is going to be key, you've got people in place, people have support behind them, regardless of what opinions in the public, listen to them, because that's key, you're going to have to have public opinion going forward, whether you like it or not, that's part of the job, may not be necessarily the partnership, but it falls on the commissioner's lap, so stand up, take the public's lashing, whether it be good, bad, or otherwise, and listen to them, if you get the people behind you, you can make a lot of good things happen, key is continuing with the business, and what you said, Jeff, about having some of the partnership or the stakeholders involved, of getting somewhat out there, I know that the confidentiality piece is crucial, but do that, I think you're on the right track with that, thank you, gentlemen.
Eric, I would encourage you to join the chamber, because we send a lot of information out, so...
I, I plan on doing so.
Appreciate that.
I haven't forgotten, thank you.
Well said, Eric.
Thank you.
I don't usually attend these types of things, I stay out of political, I'm Janice Stewart, I grew up in this community, I grew up on a farm south of town, I'm very proud of my rural heritage in this community, I also lived in the greater Cincinnati area for more than 30 years, so I tend to think outside of the box, having come back to this community three years ago, when I think back on some of the things that I've gone through in Cincinnati, and the changes that have been done in Cincinnati, and nitpicking battles that have gone on between the county commissioners and the city commissioners, and, oh, we can't do that, because they're going to get more money than we're going to get, we can't, that's, it doesn't work. Downtown Cincinnati's riverbank has just now started to grow, because they finally laid some of those differences aside, look across the river, and see what they've got. got. As a community, and as the people who represent this community, it is imperative that you attend things like open forums, whether you set them up or whether somebody like Manfred sets them up, because it's the only thing you're gonna get the public opinion. You can't sit up here like the appellate court, which is what I feel like when I sit here and look at you, just sitting out here. And I'm in the legal field, so I can say that. You can't sit like the appellate court and judge the community. You have to get down in the nitty-gritty, get down to the hands and knees, get out to the people, and see what they really want. And attending a public meeting, whether you called the public meeting or whether he set it up and suggested it, that's a moot point. The point is to get the public on your side and to help you move forward with what you're trying to do for this community. We have to grow this community if we're going to survive. It's like the little rural church that doesn't wanna do anything to bring in the younger members and the new members into the, into the church to grow it. You don't bring in new members, you don't grow. You don't bring in new business, you don't grow. You don't take care of the people who are my age range, who are out of work, and try to help them find jobs and try to get them trained into jobs to do the work that they say they're not trained or qualified for. You have to work out a program with those, with those manufacturers to train those people. No, we don't have the funds to offer the incentives like Englewood and Cincinnati and Northern Kentucky have to offer, Hebron, Kentucky have to offer. We don't have those funds. But if we don't start working and growing it, we will never have those funds.
Can I comment on that? And one, you bring up a success that we've had that I forgot to mention before, is that we did receive, or at least Sinclair is one of the partners in the partnership, and they received a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant to help start a manufacturing training facility here. We're trying to work out all the details from there. So, that's one.
And that's, and that's a great thing, because I was unemployed for almost two years when I moved back up here. About a year before I moved back up here and almost a year after I was here. And for my age range, it's very, very difficult to walk out and try to go back into the marketplace, because they, they want my expertise, but they don't wanna pay me what they think I have to have. And at that point, I just wanted to get back in the workforce. You know, I took, I cut fifty percent off of what I was making when I was last working in Cincinnati, when I took my job in this direction. And that's fine. I chose to do that, but I got back into the workforce by choosing to do that. I can build my, my way back up. I just knew. Bring my foot in the door, and let me show you what I can do. You can take it from there. But it's imperative that you, as representatives of the people, step out and meet the people on their level, or you won't be representing the people in future, because they will vote you out. I remember telling one of the ministers in Cincinnati at the church I attended, and I was sir of the executive board, and he reamed me for two and a half hours for bringing something before the board one time and forcing it to go to vote for the church. He said, this is my church. I said, I beg to differ with you. We voted you in, we can vote you out.
Let me, let me ask you, I think you heard, you heard the, a lot of people here. Are you willing to apologize for what happened to the public of making false statements in the paper, however it arrived here? Are you willing to make that apology to the public and find some kind of start, or will you continue in this mode of operating?
I'll apologize for me. I'm not speaking for the entire board, but I will apologize for me. The whole, the whole way this came about was poor communications.
No, it was perfect.
Yes, it could've been better communicated for you too, also, Manfred.
How? Let's, let's stay with the topic. How?
I got it through an email through Connie. That's how I got my invitation.
Correct.
I didn't get it sent to me. I didn't get a phone call.
Matt, how was it communicated?
I dropped the letter off here.
I got the correspondence through there.
Dropped the letter off here?
Whatever. Okay. I got a text from you.
What?
Not a phone call, text.
Because you had not responded by the RSVP date, yes?
No. I apologized to know what that day was.
Correct.
But I apologize. The biggest concern that we had was that initially, I thought, my understanding it was Goose Creek. Then when Connie brought it out Wednesday, or Monday, it said, and economic development. And that's when we discussed here and decided that we were gonna keep it in here if we were gonna go off topic, so that we were covered.
Covered in what way?
If we had to discuss anything that the three of us hadn't previously discussed or information.
How would that prohibit you from coming to a public forum? There's no legislative action.
I'm just saying, that's, that's what we did. And if that was the wrong thing to do, I apologize.
You can say, I don't know the answer to that question.
You can see that.
Apologize, that's good. That's good. Dan, what do you think?
Question.
Hold on, I need to hear from two others.
If we hold another one, are you coming?
Depends on where it's at.
Open forum.
You said what?
There's your apology, man.
Yeah, we're done. You heard it here. You heard what just happened. Depends where it's at.
But this isn't the first time it's happened. Last year, eleven months ago, Farm Bureau sent out notices and asked you guys to come to a meeting about Goose Creek. You talked and talked and talked. Jeff, you know how many months they talked about having a meeting. You didn't have a meeting. Farm Bureau scheduled one for the end of June. And then, just shortly after that, oh, and they didn't also come to our Farm Bureau Policy Development, they canceled out on that, I believe, last year, that was in June sometime. And then, you scheduled your own meeting for Goose Creek at National Trail in July, about ten days after ours was scheduled. So, we ended up changing ours, and we had ours an hour before. So, this isn't the first time they've done this. This is the second time they've done this.
Incredible. Three times? Are there any other questions? I think this is incredible, what just happened. When the public decides when to hold a meeting, you will say depends where it's at. We'll remember that. We'll remember that very clearly, my friend.
Manfred, I'd just like to throw in a little thing here. I think that maybe we should be controlled. That's a good move to do. Communications from the chamber, and you, we were told there was gonna be a meeting in Goose Creek at your place. I called you. You must have been.
I'm done with excuses. I've really, I've really...
Wait a minute, I'm talking. Okay, let me talk. I think that he had some concerns about sunshine laws, and that was because of another commission that had issues with three individuals in Preble County, and we were to make sure that we're legal.
And that was cleared up, Connie? We had communication that regards, correct? That was all cleared up, so that that would not fall under that agenda? What's next? That was clear. If we had legal bias, there was no such thing.
I would like to just comment a little bit about this. There was a deadline to give an RSVP, and when you request someone to attend something and they don't RSVP, that could mean that they don't want to attend.
Right.
Okay. It was in the newspaper before I had ever RSVP'd, that I would be in attendance as well as some other folks that had not RSVP'd.
I don't think that's...
It was in the paper before they RSVP'd.
No, we said, no, we sent the press release out, we can have, okay, and I don't know how that functioned. I don't know. I got you.
I just wanted to know that there's, I think, I, I, I am always open to talking about economic development, whether it's at my office or at a public place. What I would suggest is that it be a larger venue and there not be a limited amount of people that can attend.
Well, here's the deal.
Hold on, hold on. Some questions I got were, what happens if seventy people attend? That means it would be against the law for ten people to come into your place if occupancy was sixty. I'm not sure what your occupancy is. But there was some concern about that.
Yeah. Let me handle that part of that. Let me handle that part, because it was already planned. That is not what happened here. Trust me.
They're seeing what it's here.
The same communication wise, is that it was already put out into the public, there were posters on doors that certain people would be attending. And I know for a fact, some of them had not RSVP'd, and one of them were me. So, in the future, I'd be happy to any public meeting, but I would honestly like the respect and the thanks of honestly have been to reply to your request in a timely manner or at least communicate back and forth. And also, to be clear on what the format is, because in my mind, the commissioners had already publicly announced that there, that everything that's done with Goose Creek was done, that there's nothing else going forward. So, it's kind of a question, why are we having it when they already publicly announced that there's, it's done? So, there was, it wasn't clear as to what your expectations were for the meeting. I think next time, if we can elaborate better on what the expectations are for the meeting as public officials and people in the community, that we better understand how to prepare for it. That's just a suggestion.
Yeah. Well, let me handle the occupancy and the invitation. I'm really sorry that you didn't get that. Must've been someone...
No, I got it. I just did not RSVP, but it had been put in the public that I was attending.
Right. So, let me, let me just clarify that. So, if someone doesn't RSVP, should I mark them out then, or what should I do? I mean...
Possibly attending.
That's, that's the information you gave me, that these people have been asked.
Invite them to attend.
Yeah. So, yeah, when somebody doesn't RSVP, then we assume next time they don't come. So, how would you then explain that those who RSVP didn't show up? I mean, we can't have it both ways, you know what I'm saying? Yeah. Thanks.
Okay. We appreciate everyone's coming out. Like I said, I do apologize if it, obviously Manfred's upset, some of you are upset, but we just felt that it was in our best interest to stay here, keep it clean. In the future, hopefully we'll have a little better communications and maybe we can clear that up.